Okay, also, could we please have a moment of silence for all those suffering from earthquake disease and any other trial and tribulation? Thank you. On the agenda, we have public service announcements, we have a presentation by the Federated Church, department reports from DPW, water and sewer, fire department, town administrators update, and I'm going to cut this down. We have action items, they're all consideration and possible action on. The appointment of Matthew White as a full-time laborer slash driver for the town of Sturbridge at a pay rate pursuant to the terms set forth in the SEIU union contract effective March 7, 2023, an application for a common virtual license for Marco Baldieri/Mama Italia Restaurante at 139 Main Street, Unit 2, an application for a transient vendor license for David Brockman at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on May 7 from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and on May 8 from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Also, a request for a one-day legal license, application for Megan Jones/ Yankee Spirits for an anniversary celebration on August 19, 2023, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at 376 Main Street Parking Lot Section. We also have a request for, to support a SAFER grant proposal, also to authorize the Chair to sign the McClure Engineering, Inc. professional service agreement for the multipurpose synthetic turf athletic field at Burgess Elementary at 45 Burgess School Road in the amount of $63,000, to accept a donation in the amount of $100 from Bruce and Maria Maguaya of 111 Walker Pond Road to the Sturbridge Fire Department, correspondence, approval of minutes, Citizens Forum, and we do have a request for an executive session. Okay, public announcements. Jamie?
None.
Mary?
No.
Chase?
I have none, thank you.
Ian?
None.
I just have a reminder that the Fire Department is having a formal pinning at the safety complex Wednesday, the 8th, at 6:00 p.m., and the public is invited to it. Okay, other than that, that's all I have on public service announcements. We have a presentation by the Federated Church concerning the pumpkin patch. Okay, Mr. Mapaback, could you use the mic, please, for the people at home?
First, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for allowing the Sturbridge Federated Church the opportunity to present during your meeting. On behalf of the Sturbridge Federated Church, and the Chair of the Pumpkin Patch Committee, and the committee as a whole, we would like to present to the Sturbridge Police Department, the Sturbridge Fire Department, Joshua Hyde Library, each checks for $250 for their community programs, the Boy Scouts Troop 161 and the Girl Scout Troop 11507, each with a check of $500 each for their programs and activities for the young men and women of our town. We want to thank the town of Sturbridge for working with the Federated Church, the Sturbridge DPW for their joint efforts before and after the pumpkin patch for setup and cleanup, being not only good stewards of God's work, but good neighbors to all that participated in making this fundraiser a success. We would also like to especially thank the community and all the patrons of the pumpkin patch in making our patch an ongoing success and these donations possible. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
My first year was a blast.
Oh, it's nice.
It's extremely generous.
Oh, I had a boil.
They were great.
Those pumpkins.
Sturbridge Police Department.
She deserves such great attitudes. All her good years, thank you very much, you should appreciate it.
One more.
Friends of the library.
Oh, cameras. This is a very...
Boy Scouts. And the Girl Scouts.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Hey, Tom, can I just, for the generosity... Just to give you a plug, are you also selling your loaded baked potatoes? Is that the Federated Church?
That is the Federated Church.
Okay, so I saw the flyer, so for those who are, why don't you tell us about that? To hear about that.
It's the potato buffet, it's this Saturday from 4:30 to 6:30. The tickets are being sold at the Federated Church Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 11:45, or we'll sell some at the event. And it's basically a popping hot, big hot hotel potato, a little smaller for the children. And we're just doing takeout this year, so you're just going to get your potato, go around and pick your own garnishes, it's quite an assortment, and then there's separate desserts that you can purchase as well. And we'll support our missions, and thank you so much.
And I think it's only $7, correct?
$7 for adults, $5 for children. And then we're also still selling tickets for the Public House event, you know, their traditional delicious cabbage and corned beef cabbage and Irish lovely dinner. And that is dining only, but you can get a takeout container if you prefer as well. And that's $16 for adults and kids, adults now.
Twelve and under is a discounted price, but, and that's March 16?
Yes.
Two seedings?
Two seedings, yes. We're a regular for that one, too, because it's all you can eat.
Exactly.
I mean, my family, let's say I go up...
It's lovely, and it's also just a lovely social event.
It benefits the Harrington...
Benefits Harrington and the Federated.
Oh, and the Federated, too. I didn't... Yeah, lies both, okay, nice.
Thank you.
Thank you for your generosity. Okay, anyone wants to escape, you may. Usually, everybody writes. Okay, department reports. DPW, Heather?
Good evening.
Good evening. It's been a little while since I've been here, so I had three months of reports that came in for you. I'm not going to go through each one of them, but I'll hit some of the highlights and then my project update. Obviously, it finally decided to snow. That's probably, and honestly, if you look through these reports, we've actually had a relatively mild winter up to the last two weeks. Decided to snow in March, I don't know. So, we actually had been out trying to clean road edges, doing some cleanup work, basically waiting for the snow to come, because it was a lot of small projects, cleanup around the yard, organizing around the yard. The auction for the townwide auction for the materials we had happened over this period, so we've been helping people load up stuff in their trucks and get it offsite that we didn't want anymore, so that's, it was very successful in general. Most of it has been pretty mild, we really haven't had that many permits coming in and out right yet. I know there's some different site plans that are gearing up, and we've been working with, I've been working with Noble Energy a lot on the Mass DOT project, many meetings on that, and here, trying to work through the process there. What's the most recent stuff? Everything that's on my mind is the last two weeks of snowstorms, unfortunately, so...
Another one Saturday?
Another one potentially Saturday.
I was just telling them my son in Flagstaff just got 29 inches of snow.
They can have it.
That's what I told them.
We've also had the opportunity to train one of our personnel in a 10-hour OSHA safety, he wasn't trained yet, so we were able to send him away for a class, and we also attended, four of our residents attended new, our employees attended new DigSafe training that is coming out, so they had a meeting that they were able to virtually attend to have some updates on the DigSafe procedures. Most of the other stuff, and if anybody has any questions on the regular monthly reports, or I'll move on just to my general.
Hey, anyone have any questions on any of the reports?
I just had one question, not really a question, but suggestion. For the paving, for fiscal year '24, I know you're in the process of reviewing which roads, do we post that, the paving program, online?
Yeah, it was posted, last year's was posted on the DPW website.
I just wanted to make sure, because I had a couple of residents ask about their roads, and I thought we used to post, and we still do, okay.
And we're still just currently, well, I can go through that in mine, so I can kind of get the information out there right now. So, I've been trying to support some of the senior center renovations projects, looking at some of the site plan things and providing some comments. We still have the 501 parking lot project going, we should see that going out to bid very soon. Maple Street Waterline Project, we're still working with our grant process to get that, that's a federal grant, so the EPA paperwork is a little bit onerous, so we're still working through that, but the contractor has been contacting me, looking to start that project, so we will be moving, trying to move that along. Continuing supporting the water and sewer building, so end of March will be our next round, so we should be seeing bills go out in April. I've been also working with the town accountant on the solar credits that we have, our existing solar credits. We're trying to get those re-proportioned in some of their accounts that have positive balances, so we have large credit balances and large balances on other accounts, we're trying to get those re-proportioned out, and then we'll redo our Schedule Z once we see how that all pans out. So, we get credits from other solar fields, not on our own, that we receive the credit on certain bills, and other bills don't have credits, so we're trying to balance that out.
Doesn't translate as quickly and easily as one might think, to say, well, it came in and it was supposed to be applied to one bill, can we just shift it to another account? It doesn't work that way.
National Grid's paperwork is a little, also onerous, like I said, about EPAs, and getting them to understand our processes is not easy, it's a problem. The credits look great on paper, and the program looks great on paper, and still you try to work with National Grid to actually have them applied, it's, it becomes a...
If you look at the staff hours that we went, put into it, and you deducted that off the number of credits, it...
It doesn't look as good anymore.
It's not so good anymore, really, it's unfortunate. And we probably will have, we will probably be going to FinCom, because we'd held on paying a lot of those bills, trying to figure out what we truly had in credits before we overpaid and what we didn't, so we will have a bill to pay, we'll bring that forward, too, as we have it.
So, as I said in my, in my summary, we are starting to look at our FY '24 paving plans. Stallion Hill, part of that wasn't done last year because of the finances and money that we had, we're looking to do dowdy to lead mine, from dowdy to lead mine, where it turns into lead mine, complete that, that will complete our Stallion Hill project. Laura Hill and Orchard, we're looking to do up there in Shepherd Place, because we also had major roadway repairs up in that area, and that will kind of finish out that neighborhood, and that will have those two areas done, so we'll be able to shift on to different places. We're looking at Putnam and Lad Road, also kind of moving into a new area. I know I'll probably be asked, so I'm going to state it right now, we've been asked to look at Walker Pond Roads very recently, and I agree that they need to be done, but there is some also work, we're looking at possible water lines in that area, working with Mass DOT and the salt remediation program, because there are some contaminated wells. So, at this time, it doesn't make sense to go down and pave roads until we know if we're going to actually install water lines. So, they're not on the list this year because of the potential of the upcoming projects.
How many wells may be contaminated?
I believe, off the top of my head, I don't know the exact number, but there's, it's around 20.
Oh, quite a bit.
Yeah. Obviously, budget season is coming up, so we've had lots of budget meetings, and I've been working on the budgets, getting to know them in detail for both water sewer and DPW, and looking at our water and sewer projects that are coming up, we've been trying to work with a capital plan to try to plan out more of the work that we have going forward. A lot of it has been reactionary in the past, and I really want to, we, we're getting, the infrastructure's getting to the age where we're going to have to make some hard decisions coming up about what we're going to do. I know I've talked about Route 20 and the sewer project and the emergency repair that we've had to do down there right before Christmas. We have more camera work to do in that area to determine what we're going to have to do on the rest of the lines. You also heard us say that we drained the water tank up on the top of Stallion Hill to do some inspections, there's potential work on that tank also, or potential replacement, which is also going to be very costly. So, we have some major infrastructure needs coming on both water and sewer that you'll hear about in the budgets. And I've been trying to address staffing issues, and that is why we have someone actually coming forward this, tonight, to be appointed, and more to come soon.
Hey, do you want to do that now while you're...
Sure.
Well, that way you don't have to do that.
That way I don't have to say... Sure.
So, the park, the parking lot that everybody's awaiting, once, once a contractor is awarded the project, how long is that going to take? I mean, when can we expect to see a completed parking lot?
I would think we're going to see it completed by the end of the fall.
Okay, I was going to ask...
Before winter, it's a, it's a, it's a one-construction-season project.
Do you mind if I jump in with a quick question?
Go ahead.
I was just curious if you had any correspondence regarding the job site across Yankee Candle, if they're going to be starting up again in the spring, or is it...
We have, it's been deathly silent.
Scary silent.
Yes, and it's beginning to pothole a little bit over there in that area again, so we're going to have to get back to them on, at least...
Residents think it went away, like a lot of them said, oh, we're so glad.
I will, I will stem that right now, the project is not completed.
Right.
Their intention was to come back in the spring and pick up, back up again once construction season started again. So, you know, that, that is the intention, that there will be back construction there to complete the project. We haven't found any dates of when that's going to happen, I would assume it wouldn't be until April, just because of the way they, you know, Mass DOT is not going to want to open it up and have a potential storm.
We can poke, I can try to poke the line.
We can poke around.
Is the contract dispute over between the contractor and the state?
We, we're not informed of that.
Maybe we should make a FOIA request, because this is ridiculous. They can't explain to us when they're going to execute the project, when they're shutting down the entire region on that side. It's, I'm not mad at you guys, but that's, that's, it's, first of all, it's dangerous, it's incompetent, and it's unacceptable, and I don't think we have to be quite as nice as we've been.
I agree, I agree with Jamie.
Except we don't...
And residents are going to be up in arms again, because they are...
Been after them, when they...
New administration, and frankly, at like the, we don't know who is even right, it might not even be the state. Right. The state might not have done nothing wrong, it might be this vendor. Yep. And then there's all sorts, but either, either way, unless you start making...
No, it's not, it's not right, it's been too long, and...
We'll make the request, we can make a FOIA on it. I don't know how much they'll give us, because there's some that potentially could be in litigation, but we can at least ask.
Well, get the litigation files.
At a minimum, we can ask them to give us a schedule, so that we can inform our residents of when they're going to start doing work.
We did talk to our attorneys, and I'll have to go through the records, about whether or not we can be some type of interested party on this, because I think we had this discussion last fall. I'll go through my records and see, but I think it was going to be hard for us to piggyback on it anyway.
Are they giving any mediation to that poor business, Yankee Peddler? Are we aware?
Not that I'm aware of it.
Not that we're aware.
I mean, I know they were in communication with the owner, but...
I know that Yankee Peddler had, had a agreement with the contractor, so the contractor, a part of his contract was to do, had an agreement with Yankee Peddler, so in that, what that agreement is...
Relationship there.
Is must be a financial agreement, kind of like if you allow them to, to stage on your property...
Oh, I get it, yeah.
Then they pay you for like a rental, so basically, they're paying him...
They have interacted, the vendor and the business owner have definitely...
He wouldn't be sitting quietly. There'd be another lawsuit right there. Excuse me.
Any other questions, comments? Heather, you want to bring...
So, Mr. White isn't able to be here today, so he's, he's not here, he, he had a commitment to, to be at a different location, so he wasn't going to be able to attend, but I, I did interview Mr. White, he responded to our advertisement for our labor driver along, we had about five applicants, Mr. White was the most qualified, he has DPW experience, he has a CDL already, he was very interested in being able to come and work for the town of Sturbridge, he was very, he's very interested in working in DPW, he enjoys being in DPW, he was a great candidate, so I hope you will support his appointment tonight.
Questions from the board, comments? I did notice the, his employment record, he moved around quite a bit.
He came from Connecticut, trying to get up in here, into a job in Massachusetts, and trying to get closer and closer, he has a young child, and they live in Warren, so he was in Hudson, it was quite the commute, took a job in Oxford, still looking to get closer, because if you have to commute in, in a snowstorm, Oxford can be quite the hike from Warren, so he was, he has moved around a little bit, but he did have reasons and good references.
As long as there's reasons, and as long as you're comfortable with his qualifications, okay, any other questions, comments? Somebody want to make a motion, then?
Sure. I will move to appoint Matthew White as a full-time laborer driver for the town of Sturbridge at a pay rate pursuant to the terms set forth in SEIU union contract effective March 7, 2023.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, next we have water and sewer, Shane. Good evening.
Good evening, how you doing?
Good.
So, because Heather went first, I really don't have much, she covered everything.
I don't let everybody know.
I did submit the operating reports for December and January, plants are running well, been doing a lot of maintenance, the, the screen was finally repaired at the wastewater plant, so that's in and running well. The other one needed some work, and we sent out some pricing, and it was going to be another $50,000 to $75,000, but my mechanic thought he had a fix, he wanted a crack at it, it was $400 material, so we bought it, and it's in and running, so keep your fingers crossed. We're still going to put the money in the budget, but if this repair works, that's a huge savings to the town, and that's all the credit to my mechanic, because it was all his idea, to be honest with you, so, positive note. Heather covered Route 20 work, you'll see us out there on April, first week of April, trying to get the camera down there, clean it, and hopefully we can re-line that pipe, if we can re-line it, that's a huge savings to the town. It's going to be a busy year, so between that, in the Fisk Hill, we're going to knock that building down, engrave that off, we have the money left to do that, so we'll be doing that this spring, too. We just got to get the electric company to disconnect from the old building, and sometimes that can take a little while, but then that ice ore will go away, it'll just be all on with a new fence, and we have that money left over from the project when we built the new pump station. The new permit for the wastewater plant's in, signed, and then goes into effect April 1st, so there'll be a lot more PFOS testing on the influent, the effluent, and the sludge, and we'll just have to wait to see what comes out of that. It'll also require that the landfill gets tested within a year, and any industrial user that's doing over 25,000 gallons a day, which off the top of my head will probably be one business. So, there's no regulations on that right now, it's basically just test it, see where you're at, but I can't tell you where it's going to go from there. The water system has been tested, and has actually been put on a reduced schedule for PFOS based on its results, and then the EPA is doing what they call UCMR-5, which is unregulated contaminants, so it'll be tested for PFOS three more times this year. So, all in all, once that's done, we'll have tested the water system nine times for PFOS, so we've been pretty thorough on that end of it. Lead and copper long-range rule is going to, is in effect, actually, and we're going to have to get into everybody's house once again, and we have to confirm what kind of pipes coming into their house and document it, and we have to do that by October 2024. This all extends from the Flint, Michigan stuff. So, we're hoping to buy some software, we put it in this year's budget, and then we'll be getting out there in July and August, and it'll be every business and every home, any business or home we can't get into is automatically considered to have a lead service. So, hopefully, once we start doing this, we can do some outreach to the community, make them understand why it's so important, and get that program done by October 2017. And basically, that's all I have for you tonight, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay, board? Shane, I know, noticed the flows in both the water and wastewater are up considerably.
So, even though we haven't gotten any snow, so on the wastewater side, we haven't got any snow, and it's a lot of, it's a lot of, it's sump pumps, we'll have this conversation over and over again, and that's why the flow's up on the wastewater plant, on the water side, I just think that businesses are coming back, you compare it to numbers, when we're in the middle of the pandemic, and people weren't using as much water. I just started working on the state report, which will tell me how much water we're losing, so when I come before you next time, as long as we're under the mandate of 10%, which we're pretty much consistently under it by 5%, it shouldn't be an issue. So, it's, I did see it, it's nothing that I'm concerned about at this point.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Anything else?
No, that's it. Okay, have a good night.
Have a good night. Okay, next the Fire Department, Chief.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you have December, January, and February, correct? Okay. If you recall, the last time I was here, I mentioned that you're going to see a different format to our reporting due to a software change that we were kind of forced into making. I think the translation is, is pretty close, and the reports are pretty comparable to what you're used to seeing, maybe just a little bit different format. Of note, our year-end numbers were up over 2021, we continue to see the, our call volume increase, more importantly than that, we continue to see the nature of the calls that we're responding to are more and more involved and complicated. That translates to our personnel being at the hospital for longer periods of time, because the nature of the, the calls that were going on require more intervention, more reporting, more interaction with the hospital. So, the downfall to that is that they're out of service for longer periods of time each, each time they're, they're out of service. There aren't any really real trends in call volume, although I will note that we, I am seeing a larger number of carbon monoxide incident calls, and a lot of that's attributed to not well-maintained heating equipment, so I would recommend that homeowners, renters, make sure that their heating equipment is, is properly maintained, and I think that will go a long way to helping with the carbon monoxide alarms we're seeing. The majority of them are false, but we are seeing some carbon monoxide.
How often should they be being changed or cleaned?
At least annually, yeah, at least annually. I, I mean, for my own home, I, I do it at the beginning of the heating season, just so that when it's sitting all summer, it's not, I don't pay for it in the spring, I wait till the fall to do it, so, but annual, at least annually, they should have their heating system checked. Chimneys should be, if you're burning in a chimney, especially wood, pellets, coal, those should be cleaned annually, if not, twice a year, so...
Okay, Chief, could you put all that on your website?
Absolutely, sure. Yep, and we'll, we'll get it up on Facebook, too.
Copy that over onto our Facebook as well.
Then I remember, like, cleaning the lint from your dryers, but we don't...
Then I remember like cleaning the lint from your dryers, but we don't have anything that was any snow. I remember we were told that that's a big hazard as well.
Right, yeah. The lint that, when you dry your clothes, the lint that you see on your lint filter is only a portion of the lint that's actually produced from the dryer. And you should, you should clean out the pipe that goes to the exterior. Certainly keep it from being blocked on the exterior, but it should be cleaned on a, you know, regular basis. And really, that's determined by how much drying you do of your clothes, so.
I just assumed it all came out on the lint thing.
Oh, gosh, no.
I know, I'm sure we clean it. That's just not my.
What's really important is if you have bends in those, where it comes out of the back of the dryer, if you have a straight shot, it's, it's pretty easy to clean.
Right.
But if you have bends in that hose, that lint will gather in those bends and it really becomes, first of all, it takes away the efficiency of your dryer and it, it leads to the potential for.
You can get.
That's not one of my chores, so I don't. We all have our own thing, okay?
Like this, even more, so.
I send Breeze up in the attic.
I remember Lieutenant Aaronelli.
No, there was a, oh, go ahead. I didn't mean to.
Oh, no. Any questions on the, the reports?
Well, pretty thorough.
I will mention, I like the new, the first page that I put in the packet with the, the graph. I like the way that's laid out. It, it shows you how many calls we responded to and the breakdown of whether it was a fire-related call or an EMS-related call. And then below that, it actually gives you the breakdown of what type of call it was, if it was a fire-related call. I think the new reporting software that we have from ESO Solutions does a nice job with, with that part of it. Any questions on those?
I find the accident reports quite interesting. I mean, they're all over the place.
They are, yeah. That's, that's, the number of cars that come through town is estimated around 11 million per year. And that's all the roads. So you can, I mean, just.
Where do we get our estimates from?
That came from, I think, DOT. I'll have to double check, but I think that was from DOT.
11 million cars through Sturbridge.
Yeah, and that includes 90, includes 84, it includes 20, all, all the, all the town roads, all the county and state roads.
They're going to do traffic counts this year.
So we'll be able to fine tune that.
Yep.
Good, good. I have some exciting news to share with you and, and the town. First of all, thank you for mentioning our pinning ceremony. We're having a pinning ceremony on Wednesday night at 6:00 PM at the Public Safety Complex. We don't do this all the time, but we've had some promotions. We brought on a deputy fire chief and we've had some exciting calls that resulted in one individual being saved from cardiac arrest that we're going to recognize the responders and the individual will be present for the ceremony. So I would love to see as many people from the town there. Certainly, the board is, is welcome and invited also and we'll have a little potluck refreshments afterwards.
During the day though, right?
6 o'clock.
Oh, it's at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, 6:00 PM, yep. The next thing I want to share with all of you is that this fall, we are going to work in collaboration with Tantascua High School and put on a actual high school level class on introduction to the fire service. This class will be an hour, one period each day, Monday through Friday, for a whole semester, taught by members of the fire department and some of the area fire departments. We've been working very closely with the superintendent's office and the principal's office at the high school to get the details all put together. And we finally got word that it will be part of the curriculum starting in September. And I want to give a shout out to firefighters Matt Bono and Luke Quattruccielli for kind of taking the bull by the horns and doing a lot of the legwork. We have lesson plans and schedules. We're going to have our own classroom there. I think the class is going to be limited to 15 students, but I think this is going to be really good for the town. It's, we're excited about it and.
Recruiting mechanism.
I'm hoping it turns into a really good recruiting tool. So if you're in the high school, be on the lookout for it when it comes time to select your, your classes and we look forward to seeing you all in the fall. So we're excited about that. Last bit of exciting news I have. Thursday night, we had two of our members graduate from the Call Volunteer Fire Academy. They, Joe Doudorian and Mike Jelineus started back in the fall, four months, 240 hours worth of classroom, Tuesdays and Thursday nights and Saturdays. And both of them graduated Thursday night, which was really cool. And the bigger surprise was that Joe Doudorian was named the outstanding student of the class. And that is an honor that was bestowed upon him by the Training Council. It's called the Martin McNamara Award. And Martin McNamara was a call volunteer recruit who went through training and subsequently was killed in a structure fire. And the Training Council decided to name this Outstanding Student Award after him and give it to a member of each of the training classes. Neither I nor Joe knew that he was getting this award Thursday night until they actually announced it. So it was quite the surprise. It's based on their academics, it's based on their practical abilities and their, for lack of a better term, their citizenship, their, their personal being. So I want to recognize Joe for, for that award. At the same time, when this, when the graduation ceremony was over, the lead instructor pulled me aside and told me that it was his decision, it was his job to make the decision on who got the award. And there's a formula. He said, but this time it was the hardest decision that he had to make because Mike Jelineus was a fraction of a point behind Joe in that category. So the fact that both of them finished at the top of their class is a really, really cool thing that I'm super proud of and I want, I want to recognize them for, for their accomplishments.
Are they still talking to each other, one beating the other one out?
I think they're.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I think it's a testament to the individual that we have working for the Sturbridge Fire Department, from these two individuals all the way through the staffing. They're dedicated, they're committed, they want to work hard, they want to give back to this town. And I think that, you know, these guys getting recognized by the Fire Academy for their accomplishments really shows the, the caliber of the individual that we have here in Sturbridge. So I wanted you to be aware of that, so, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Great stuff.
That's it for my reports.
Okay, do you want to jump into the SAFIR grant?
Sure.
Here and then?
Sure. Really, this is a notification to the board and to the town administrator that the SAFIR grant applications are open at this time. Unlike the last SAFIR grant, which we received in 2017 where there was a match to the grant, there's no match to these grants. This is 100% funded for three years by the federal government. All I'm asking for tonight is your permission to submit an application. If we're awarded a grant, you will have an opportunity to accept or decline that at that time based on whatever financial evidence we have to either support or not support it. So tonight's request is simply to submit the application for the grant.
Okay, any questions from the board? Somebody want to make a motion then?
I will move to give permission to, in support that the Sturbridge Fire Department permit, submits a SAFIR grant proposal for the Sturbridge Fire Department.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You. You too.
You too. The town administrators update.
I don't have anything except to remind everybody that on March 17th at 2 o'clock across the street at the old burial ground, the Daughters of the American Revolution will be formally unveiling a plaque honoring our revolutionary soldiers. It is the first of them to be presented in the state. So it'll be the first in the Commonwealth to be presented. There may be others at different parts of the Commonwealth, but they picked Sturbridge as the first place to unveil. And so as many of you who would like to have come, we'd love to have the public there. It's an honor to have the Daughters of the American Revolution and I believe that the national president of that organization may be coming as well. They have a whole convention going on down in Southbridge and they're coming up for the event. But again, 2 o'clock on the 17th, so.
Is that on our website? Is that on our website?
That's not yet on our website. It will be, we had, I just had a final confirmation on some information today, so.
Residents might enjoy going to that.
Absolutely. We'd love to have residents. It's after the town hall hours, so parking will be, people can park in the town hall lot, the COB lot and around the commons. We would love to have people come by. It's pretty exciting.
Well, they come, Mr. Brea does a presentation. I forget which month because he has a couple he does. And the Daughters of the Revolution come.
Think they will, well, he's still planning, I believe, on doing the May presentation, the May remembrance of the revolutionary soldiers. So I know that's typically when they do come. They may, I don't know if they'll be coming again in March or April for this. I think this will be their primary event. They have a banquet that night. They have a luncheon during the day, so it's a big festivity. Please, members of the public, you know, I know it's during school hours, but anybody who, you know, has children interested in history, they can bring them and it'd be important.
You're saying have them cut class?
Maybe people are homeschooling and are choosing to incorporate that as their history lesson.
Lesson planned for the day.
Hey, listen, if I could pick the curriculum, I might say take the day out and come celebrate, you know, and, and understand a little bit about the revolution. But the heck, it's been started around here, so I'd try to celebrate.
Okay.
That's all for me tonight.
Okay, is anybody have any question on one presentation? Okay, next we have a request for common vic license for Marco Baldieri/Mamma Italia Restorante at 139 Main Street, Unit 2, Sturbridge. Scott Grier is going to speak.
Good evening, all.
Good evening, Scott.
Marco wishes he could be here tonight. His wife had her cast removed. She broke her ankle and she's back to being mobile again, which is very, they're very excited about. Marco's looking for his common vic license. He's going to be in Bedrock Plaza next to my store. It's going to be basically a small dining area, six tables, 24 people inside, concentrating on meals to go and slight, some eat-in at night and, well, and during the day. He's also hoping that, that he'll be able to do a BYOB. And that's pretty much it. This is the first step and then once we get this, then we move through the departments.
Okay, questions, comments?
Are you changing a lot of the layout right now when it was Ron's or?
Not really. The kitchen remains the same, where what he will not have is, you won't see the display cases like you did because all his, all of his food is cooked to order. It's not pre-prepared and everything, if you order something, he cooks it, you get it. So what was where those cases are is now his dining area. It's, it's been, there's a significant change to it. When you see it, you walk in, you'll see that it's, it's relatively nice. The floor's been carpeted, the lighting's been changed and so it's going to look good. He's, he's anxious to move, just a little history on Marco and Robyn's men. Originally from Italy, Rome, Italy. He sometimes can be a little difficult to understand and, but he is, you know, a true Italian when, you know, in his, he's cooking from his mother's recipes and the food's delicious. It's, there's no question about it. So we're looking forward to getting him in.
I'm back to pasta, Mary.
So.
Excellent.
Good.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then on the common vic?
I'll make a motion to approve the common vic license for Marco Baldieri/Mamma Italia Restorante at 139 Main Street, Unit 2, Sturbridge.
I will second.
Discussion, all in favor? Hey, good luck, Scott.
Now, on the, we talked briefly on the.
The BYOB.
No permits required, no.
No, no license from the state, nor the town on that, just, we just have it on the bottom of that, so we know who's doing it and who's not doing it.
Okay, awesome.
Okay?
We'll let you all know when it's, when he's up and running.
Thank you.
That's good, Scott. Okay, let's see. Okay, next is an application for transient vendor license for David Brockman at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on May 7th from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM and May 8th from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
I took your coffee.
Okay. The applicant's not here, but nine out of 10 times, we don't have the applicant here. Hosts 95 vendors and he makes the application for the entire group. Anyone have any questions? Someone want to make a motion?
I will move to approve the transient vendor license for David Brockman at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on May 7th from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM and May 8th from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Next. Okay, application for one-day legal license for Megan Jones/ Yankee Spirits for an anniversary celebration on August 19th, 2023 from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM at 376 Main Street, the parking lot section. Good evening. Now, which anniversary?
This, well, we're celebrating our 50th. It was actually a few years ago, it was 2020, but obviously things didn't go as planned that year. So we're switching things up. We've been kind of waiting and holding off. We haven't even resumed any of our grand tastings until this year, just because of COVID. We're hoping to do that this fall, but we don't want to delay any longer. So we're hoping to get this on for the summer. We obviously do tastings throughout the year within the building, but being outside, our traditional license doesn't cover that. So that's why we are asking for this. We're hoping to kind of have it be more of a festival. We recently did a five-year anniversary at our Norwood location. We hosted a heel tasting event to raise money for the Matt Light Foundation in our Swansea location. So we're getting, we're exploring kind of these new tastings and events that are outdoors. It's easier with the public, the general public, instead of cluttering up the whole store. And we're able to see more people in this post-COVID environment. So raffles, tastings, small sampling, they're going to be, they're setting up, we're bringing in food trucks, they're setting up games in the parking lot. Some, like I said, events indoors as well, but the, the part we're looking for is the licensing outside.
Okay, now you say 50th, where did the business actually begin? Okay, now you say 50th, where did the business actually begin?
Um, to my knowledge, it was in Sturbridge and Southbridge, were the original locations, but that was before my time. So, so I've been, it's been in my family since 1987, and, yeah, we're excited, celebrate. Sturbridge is our, our longest existing store.
Your favorite, is what you mean.
Well, personally, because I live in Sturbridge as well, yes. But yeah, so we're, we're very, like I said, we're excited. We've, we've, you know, built a new store in Norwood and celebrating that, but really to kind of go back to our roots and, you know, Sturbridge was our flagship store, so.
Okay, any questions?
There's going to be an ice luge or?
No, there will, there will not be an ice luge, but there will, we'll have bracelets with tickets, so people can only get 10 samples throughout the day, and that's for the recommendations. I think it's one ounce of beer, it's half an ounce of wine, a quarter ounce of spirits, and the bracelets come with 10. We still haven't decided if we'll do five or four, but we'll limit it.
Yeah.
And then each sample takes a tab and controls it.
Sounds good.
No act throwing at the same
Sounds good. Anything else from the board? Someone want to make a motion then?
I will move to approve the one-day liquor license application for Megan Jones Yankee Spirits for an anniversary celebration on August 19th, 2023, from 12:00 to 4:00 PM at 376 Main Street Parking Lot Section.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Is that a Saturday, the 19th?
It is, yeah. We originally had booked it for August 5th and then realized that was the Pan Mass Challenge Day. So now we pivoted and now the 19th.
They can have a few drinks before they get on the bike.
Yeah, I mean, they leave at 6:00 AM, so we thought we might be okay.
Early drinking.
Yeah, so we moved to the 19th, which is a Saturday from 12:00 to 4:00 PM.
Nice.
Right, thank you guys very much.
Okay, thank you. Probably see you there.
Right.
Okay, next on the agenda, looking for authorization for the chair to sign the McClure Engineering Inc. Professional Service Agreement for the multi-purpose synthetic turf athletic field at Burgess Elementary, 45 Burgess School Road, in the amount of $63,000. Any questions?
Good news?
Yeah, we are hoping
Anytime you spend money, it's good news.
Well, if we could get a multi-purpose field, it's going to be even better news, so.
Plus, this is ARPA money.
This is ARPA money, yeah, so we're not, we're not spending
Yeah, we approved it last time with the ARPA.
Yeah, and as a reminder, when the survey came out from the public, open space and recreational activities came in on the top of what the public hoped for ARPA money to be used for. So this really feels even better in that sense.
Good.
Okay, any questions, comments? Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I will move to authorize the chair to sign the contract with McClure Engineering Professionals, oh, excuse me, the McClure Engineering Professional Service Agreement for the multi-purpose synthetic engineering, strike that, a multi-purpose synthetic turf athletic field at Burgess Elementary School located at 45 Burgess School Road, Sturbridge, in the amount of $63,000.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, okay, next, request to accept a donation in the amount of $100 from Bruce and Miriam Maguire of 111 Walker Pond Roads, Sturbridge, to the Sturbridge Fire Department. The, they sent in a letter, it says, "Dear dedicated EMTs, Fire Police Dispatches, just a note to thank the wonderful professional EMTs who came to my aid in the early hours of Sunday morning, January 29th, when I fell in the middle of the night and needed quite a bit of assistance to get off my floor and back into bed. From the moment the professional and reassuring dispatches took our call, we knew we were in good hands. The three gentlemen, EMT, one whose name is Bob, came promptly, quickly addressed the situation and had me upright within a matter of minutes. They all were so thorough in terms of checking me out and made an uncomfortable situation very reassuring. I can't thank everyone enough for the prompt, caring, and respectful response. Please know how much we appreciate all you first responders do for our community. We have lived here for 40 years and are so appreciative of such wonderful, selfless, Working, I think, tirelessly every day here in Sturbridge for all of us in that sign. Miriam and Bruce Maguire." Okay, zero motion?
I will move to accept the donation in the amount of $100 from Bruce and Miriam Maguire with gratitude.
Second that.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
And Robyn, I know I always say this, but we send a thank you, right? Or sorry, how do we do?
Okay, next we have correspondence. Mary?
Yep. We have a letter from the Central Mass Regional Planning Corporation dated February 16th, letting us know that they are planning their 2023 traffic count program activities, and attached is the various locations where they will be putting a counter for safety purposes. I'll read it, because this might interest people. Sometimes our correspondence doesn't necessarily. Fisk Hill Road north of Route 131, Fisk Hill Road south of Route 20, Hall Road south of Route 20, Holland Road south of Route 20, Main Street, New Boston Road north of Route 20, Route 148 south of I-90, and Warren Road west of 148, and we are allowed to request additional counters.
I believe earlier in the year, they had asked us if we wanted to put anything else on the list, but I'm sure we've totally forgotten it. Does anybody have any other suggestions?
I'll check with Heather to see if there was anything else she wanted on there. She probably, she and I probably came in after that.
You know, the roads better, yeah.
But yeah, I don't recall us being asked, but it might have been right when I first came.
Yeah, I forget it's
I will check with her. She and I came at the same time, so.
Your memory's better than mine. But it looks like we can still have an opportunity now to do it.
Those sound like the biggies anyway, those, those are some critical points.
Yeah.
They've done traffic counts on 49 because I just sat at a DOT road safety audit meeting on a couple of the intersections that we're working on, that they are working on on 49, Walker Pond Road and one of the other roads up 49. And so they have full traffic counts along that road as well, right now, so.
The most dangerous road in Massachusetts?
Um, they, when, when DOT is actively looking to redesign two intersections, yeah, you got to figure it's pretty dangerous when they're, they're voluntarily working with us and wanting to do it. So yeah, the speeds were a little scary when they showed us what the average speed was at certain times of day.
Yeah, goes to the drivers. Some people didn't have a license.
And a road that's straight like that just screams speeding.
I know, I missed the
That's another road that at least has had counts on it.
Yeah.
Separate from this particular project, but that we're aware of.
One time I had a black bear run right in front of my car on that road.
Oh, yeah.
They did have a list of types of accidents, and they had a little icon of a couple little deer.
I don't think, yeah, a bear was a whole other category.
Bear, they did not make it look like a bear when they were talking about animal incidents.
Did you have to slam on your brakes, or was it like in the
Oh, yeah, it was running right across, yeah.
Jamie buried the accelerator.
Yeah, I was like, let's see, you want to play chicken?
I've seen a lot of, I used to drive the road a lot, and I saw a lot of passing, you know, when I was going 10 miles an hour speed limit game, people blowing by you like going back.
67.
But that's why those posts they put
Average.
It was, at certain times, they were 67 miles an hour, one, one of, one particular direction on one stretch, 67 miles an hour was
Well, I saw a bear this, on your road, not that far away from your house.
It's the Burgess bear.
Running, no, not the Burgess bear. It's a good old fashioned
Well, they were catching that one on the camera at the school, like five or six years ago. It was, it was running by the front door, and I was like, well, that's because it's a bear.
We, we have animals, we do, but I like those posts that they have up, but naturally, they have to take them down for plowing.
Yeah.
So people are back to speeding. Okay, any other correspondence do you have?
I don't, I don't think so, just that one letter, right, Michelle? Yep.
Okay, and we don't have any minutes? Just thought I'd ask because it's listed. Citizens Forum, just here out of the goodness of your hearts? You got money.
You're guilty just walking out after you get money, right?
Everyone else did.
Glad you're hanging, glad you're saying.
A couple of things I wanted to hear myself.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, it sounded interesting, to say the least.
And if I could, would you like to introduce yourself? Sure, if we could take one split second under Citizens Forum?
Sorry, I'm Amanda Hellyer, I know most of you. I'm here on behalf of Senator Fatman, just to introduce myself. I'm newest member of his team, and I live in Sturbridge, so I'm excited to work with you on many different initiatives.
Forward to it.
Yeah, a lot of your family lives in Sturbridge.
Yep.
Don't they all, except for one brother?
Yeah, all, eight of my great-grandparents were in Southbridge, and then we just spread, so everyone's my cousin at some point.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Nice to see you.
You look like both your parents.
Little bit of each. We know who to go to, who to
I was looking out for something.
Okay, we do have a request for an executive sessionary.
Yeah. I move to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges against a public officer, employee, staff, member, or individual.
And we
Oh, I'm sorry, and not to reconvene an open session.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.